Today, Monday, July 22, 2024, at 6:30 PM. I would like to state that this meeting is being recorded. This is a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health. The Chair for the Board of Selectmen will facilitate the section of the Board of Selectmen meeting, items one through 11. And the Board of Health Chair will open the Board of Health meeting under Agenda Item 12.
Chairman, it says the opposite. I think you said Board of Health instead of Board of Selectmen.
On the one through 11?
I will facilitate the section of the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen will facilitate that part of the meeting. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living, eternal, and strong.
Okay, the second item on the agenda would be citizens' comments. If there are any citizens out there that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, please step up to the podium and, or the chairs, and just announce yourself.
Which would you prefer?
Whatever you're comfortable at, sir.
Is it on? Yeah. Paul Lyons, Fish Road, Dudley. And last Monday, the neighbors, my neighbors, we discussed things, and an issue came up. Someone in town sent, a friend sent an email to someone on Fish Road, one of my neighbors, that I found quite troubling. So I did some investigating, as they say, Google it. And I'd like to start off by reading you three quotes from a website, not my words. These are exact quotes that you can check. And the first quote says, "Fish Road is the only facility in Massachusetts accepting soil with elevated levels of naturally occurring arsenic. Phase two of the project provides landfill airspace for 850,000 tons of material." Second quote, "The Dudley reclamation facility on Oxford Ave in Dudley, Mass opened in 2016 with 4 million tons of airspace. It's the largest quarry," I'm having problems with this, "reclamation facility in the state." Third quote, "This site is a soil depository facility for Boston and New England large construction and soil excavation projects." Now, I did some research on this corporation. They were cited previously by the state for illegal dumping. And the first thing that hit me was, who in town government thought it was a good idea to have not one but two contaminated soil facilities in the town of Dudley? Where maybe if you could tell me we're getting tens of millions of dollars from this, you might have an argument. I still wouldn't vote to approve two sites. But what are we getting from this? We're getting property tax from two sites? That's it? I have a number of questions, but on Fish Road, if you don't know, previously they were looking to put a marijuana farm there. And we were told at various meetings, planning board meetings, to get our well water tested as a baseline for later on construction. And last year, I did. And it came back elevated levels of arsenic. And I'm just wondering if a whole lot of contaminated soil has been dumped on Fish Road, and this is now showing up? Not to mention, I've been told, I've never been to the Oxford Ave facility, I don't know where it is, but I've been told it's right by the French River. And if you know Fish Road, Intervale, West Dudley Road, 131, that's the Quinabog River. And I understand that there's a law about quarry reclamation, but to me, a quarry is like a granite quarry, where you cut out slabs of granite and eventually, when they stop, it fills up with water. Everything I know about Fish Road is not a granite quarry. It's my understanding, I've been there for decades, that trucks come and they take out stone, dirt, shale, whatever. But now I find out that now they're putting things in. And at this company is Corporation's website, if you type in Dudley reclamation project, it comes back at this Corporation's website, starting in 2018. So that's another question. When did this start on Fish Road? Because my neighbors and I, we were not informed when we went to all the meetings about the proposed marijuana farm, there was nothing brought up about dumping contaminated soil. And as I'm sure you're going to speak to, because it came up in the search about last week's Board of Health meeting, about PFAS, forever chemicals, not just arsenic, but PFAS chemicals being dumped, I guess, in town, or showing up in people's well water or the soil, I'm not sure. One of my questions to you is, has there been testing of the well water, well, the groundwater? Has there been testing of all this soil coming into Dudley for years? And again, it just, who thought that making Dudley the contaminated soil depository of Massachusetts was a good idea? I just, and things were brought up about, you know, values of homes, who wants to buy a home close to a contaminated soil depository facility? There's a lot of questions here, and I hope this is being addressed, because this is the first that, and I've talked to a lot of people, and this is the first I've ever heard of years of dumping. And I'd like to see if the town has any documentation on tests for water, for air, all these trucks coming in. Now you find out they have contaminated soil. Everybody knows what the climate is, the wind blows, things like that. And to me, it's a scary situation, because I'm pretty old, and somebody, one of my neighbors, as we were talking, said, "We should call Erin Brockovich and get her looking into this." And I said, "Well, that's an appropriate analogy, but first find out what's going on." And that's my biggest question to you. Do you know what's going on at these two facilities? What's being dumped? Is it arsenic? Is it PFAS chemicals? Is it something worse? Because I remember Love Canal in the news. I remember WR Grace in Wilburn, which by the way, is still not cleaned up from 1982. So this is what concerns, man should concern every citizen in Dudley. Every citizen, if contaminated soil is coming into two sites and being dumped here. I hate to think what Dudley may be in for if testing starts and bad news is found to be part of our problem. And I know you've got a lot on your plate, and I know it's not an easy job being up there on any board in town. But, you know, I think of Southbridge and their landfill. I, the problems, it's leaching into Charlton now. It's not just Southbridge's problem. It's crossing the border. Just the people's health is involved here. You know, like I said, I'm old. I could be dead tomorrow. But you have a lot of young children in this town that are going to grow up and drink well water and breathe air that may be coming from a contaminated site. And I hope that all departments of the town is now looking into this, and that people on Fish Road, people on West Dudley Road, Intervale, Oxford Ave will be kept informed as to what's happening and what's going on. Can you inform me now if the town has taken steps? My understanding is, because I haven't heard any trucks for a while on Fish Road, that they've stopped dumping on Fish Road. But is there any information you can give me about this tonight?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lyons, for that information. And from what I got down, six questions. Okay? And they will be looked into and addressed. Anybody on this board or the TA's office is free to make whatever comments they choose, if they wish to or not. And if anybody does, right now would be the time. If not, that's fine, too.
Well, I don't want to leave Mr. Chairman any doubt in anyone's mind that the Board of Health is in contact with DEP, and as far as I know, that company is working cooperatively with both bodies to work through a lot of those questions. I don't personally have the answers for you right now, but they certainly are not going unaddressed.
I thank you very much, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Is anybody else that has anything? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sandy Lito. I live on West Dudley Road, the corner of Fish and West Dudley, one of his neighbors. And unlike Paul, I am not old. I'm going to be alive for a very long time. And I want to know if that soil that is being deposited down the street from my house has PFAS. Make no question about it, it should be tested. Just tell us, and we can work from there. I know we're in, you know, we have arsenic, we have radon, we're in central Massachusetts. I understand all of that. I'm talking about the other chemicals, asbestos, other things that come from construction sites. I'm well aware of what goes into some of that debris. So I just want to, I'm not going to reiterate what he said, but we want to know if it's being tested for PFAS and if it is found. Also, there was a, last week at the Board of Health meeting, there was a board, newly-elected member of the Board of Health that wants to be able to do her job remotely, and I just wanted to voice my opinion on that, and that would be no. Firm no. There are people here in town that should be doing that job that we voted for. You know, you can pick one or the run or off. I don't, you know, you guys can figure out how to do it, but I would never support that. And that's pretty much it. Thank you so much for your time.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Hearing none. I'd like to move to Agenda Item Number Three, Approval Minutes for July 8, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of July 8, 2024.
Motion made.
Second.
With the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. We will now go to Item Number Four, the Town Clerk Funding Request. Town Clerk is going to ask the Board of Selectmen to vote to approve funding for temporary staff member to assist with processing September 2024, November 2024 election materials. Town Clerk?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So basically, I had come before the Board of Selectmen earlier in the spring for this similar request. We had four elections in the spring. We had the two special in February and March, then we had the March primary and our annual, all of which had to have the vote by mail, because it's a presidential year. If you do it for one, you have to do it for all. So I believe there was a vote. I apologize, I didn't have time. I looked through the minutes quickly. I believe Mr. Sigonevich made a motion at that meeting to approve nine, up to 19 hours a week for extra work out of the temporary account to pay for that. And I want to say it was approved through November, but the motion ended June 30, which is why I want to make sure I'm standing on solid ground right now, having my worker come in now for 19, up to 19 hours a week through November.
Okay, and your concern is the legitimacy or the pay or the source of funding?
Well, I think, I think Mr. Sigonevich's motion was to allow me to use the temporary worker fund for up to 19 hours a week until June 30, 2024. We still have the September and November, so it would be through November is what I'm requesting.
So now, okay, now you're requesting another time period?
Well, yes, I requested it in the spring, but the motion only went to June 30.
So the motion would only cover up to June 30?
Up to June 30.
So it'd have to be another motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think if I remember the discussion right is, because we had to look at the end of the fiscal year and then the new fiscal year.
That's correct.
Correct.
Mr. Sigonevich.
So are you looking for the same amount of hours to go through? I apologize, I have the, that piece of the agenda on my phone. You're looking for?
Up to 19 hours a week from, beginning this week, July 22 through November 1.
Through November 1.
Through November 1.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to vote that we approve funding for up to 19 hours, a temporary staff member to assist with processing September 2024 and November 2024 election materials up until?
November 1.
November 1.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's important that, that's mandatory work. That has to get done. That has to get done in a timely manner. None of us want to spend money, but we need to get it done.
What the source of funding would be, what?
It was taken out of the temporary or seasonal town hall workers, I believe is what it was called.
So, Mr. Chairman, that, that account is funded to allow part-time help to come back to continue with the transition between the Town Accountant's Office and the Town Administrator's Office and Board of Selectmen's Office. And I think it's probably, needs to be used as the town clerk's asking for, to help with the, you know, the tremendous workload with the election. But I would like the Board to consider when we get to our October supplemental, to put that money back from free cash, so that it will be fully funded for, till the end of the year, to provide for both the Assistant Town Accountant and the help in the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator's Office.
So do we have a known or unknown cost?
Let's see, so I have the salary amount with $16.94 times 19 hours is $3,2186 a week, times 15 weeks would be $4,827.90.
We should, we should be able to put that back without a problem, Mr. Chairman, I would think, in October. Should not be a problem.
Okay. Anybody else have any other further discussion?
Those are all the questions I had.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you. Do you want me to stay up for the next item?
I thought you had to go pack.
Excuse me?
Do I have to go pack?
No, I was going to stay up for the election workers.
Okay.
Okay. So then we'll go to Item Number Five, Appointments. Appointment of Election Workers Termined to Expire 8/31/2025. So Item Five and Six will refer to the clerk to go over.
Okay, so we're looking at Appointment of Election Workers, Janet Crockett, Jonathan Curry, and Jaclyn Maloney.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the election workers, Termined to Expire 8/31/2025, Ezra.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Okay, and then for reappointments, these are Reappointment of Election Workers Termined to Expire 8/31/2025. We have Carol Antos, Cheryl Bernardo, Deborah Baslow, Elizabeth Beals, Heather Bose, Janice Brady, Linda Brink, Joanne Brinker, Jennifer Knoyer, Zachary Knoyer, John Cunningham, Zachary Davy, Gianna DeSante, Catherine DeRoche, Mary Devlin, James Dunn, Cynthia Evansky, Brandon Johnson, Jane Johnson, Catherine Joseph, Lori Joseph, Judy Joy, James Coleriff, Alice Kujowski, Evelyn Cullis, Deanna Kuzawa, Margaret Makuga, Brian McCoy, Monica McCoy, Leslie Mantos, Maureen Morrissey, Diane Rosinski, Joseph Nudorinsky, Joan Putney, Nancy Roy, Louise Williams, Pam Williams, and Don Wilson.
Mr. Johnson.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the Reappointment of Election Workers Termined to Expire 8/31/2025, Ezra.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Excuse me, could I just make one comment? It was Monique McCoy, not Monica.
Oh. I apologize.
It's okay, I just wanted to add the motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just my motion is, that's crooked.
So we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to all of those that will participate. Oh, you keep your line.
Sure, we're going to the public hearing now.
Correct.
Okay.
Let me just be honest.
All right, number seven. It's going to be Licensing Public Hearing. Public Hearing is going to be to transfer of all alcohol package, store license, pledge of inventory, pledge of collateral, Nieski, Inc., DBA, Marty's of Dudley, to 119 Marty's Liquors, Inc., DBA, Marty's of Dudley. New owner-manager, Vikesh Patel, continued from 7/8/24. The Chair opens public meeting at 6:57 PM. Counselor, the floor is yours.
Yeah, good evening. Attorney John Maradia, on behalf of 119 Marty's Dudley, Inc., we're here for the continuation of the public hearing to transfer the liquor license. When we were here a couple of weeks ago, the two remaining outstanding items were, one, getting a background check and fingerprinting with the police department for Vikash Patel, which he completed a day or two after our last hearing. And two was submission of an insurance binder for workers' compensation, which I provided to the Administrator Friday and today.
Excellent. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No new comments from us from the past meeting. It's a transfer, buying the business, same footprint, same operation, just go with that.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody in the public sector have any questions at all? Comments, concerns, none? Okay. Then if there's no further discussion... Then if there's no further discussion, we can close the public hearing at six fifty-nine P M. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to transfer all alcohol package store license, pledge of inventory, pledge of collateral, Taniski, Inc., DBA Marty's of Dudley, one nineteen, to one nineteen Marty's Liquors, Inc., DBA Marty's of Dudley, new owner manager, Vikash Patel, continued from seven eight twenty-four.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item, number eight, town administrators report by public board of selectmen, board of selectmen will vote to accept and don't take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've heard back from the state and we've been awarded twenty-three thousand three hundred dollars from the Office of Brants and Research for the town cybersecurity program, remember it was pending the last meeting. This will secure some funding to add some additional security features to our network and to further develop exercise and train to a disaster recovery plan that would help us maintain continuity of operations if we lose our network. And so we anticipate that some of this work will begin, begin at the end of August. And I'm going to meet with the department heads tomorrow, and we'll kind of talk about, talk through what's going to be next in terms of that grant. The town has received some grant funding for infrastructure improvements and upgrades around the Stevens Mill area. We are working on putting together a community meeting that would give the residents the opportunity to come in and learn more about what those improvements will be, what kind of disruption it may temporarily pose to the area, how we can minimize that. And we're targeting August for those meeting notices to go out. The bulk of that project for the remainder of this year will include the installation of sewer mains with a cleanup of the site for the winter, which is anticipated to be completed by December ninth of this year. More good news from the grant front, the town of Dudley has been approved for a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. That action grant was awarded to the town in the amount of two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. That's forty-nine thousand fifty in F Y twenty-five, and in F Y twenty-six, it's two thirty-one nine fifty for a total of two eighty-one. For the project, which has been titled Stormwater retrofit program at the Dudley Municipal Complex, and this fits in perfectly with the park grant that we put in for to redo the playground because it proposes to get some of the stormwater runoff off the drug, out of the driveway and off of West Main Street and help kind of pull back on the flooding that we experienced on West Main Street. It uses trees and plantings and that sort of thing to help absorb the water as opposed to shooting it off onto the, onto the main street and cause erosion and other problems that end up clogging up our storm drains and, and leading to, you know, flooded out areas. So we've got a total area of pavement of approximately a thousand square feet. We're going to add one hundred new plantings, which will reduce the heat retention in the area and break up the extensive area of uninterrupted pavement. The bio retention areas and plantings will reduce runoff from the site, capturing and infiltrating almost six thousand cubic cubic feet of runoff from the parking lot. It'll be diverting this runoff from the Route one ninety-seven drainage system, and that's equivalent to roughly almost an inch of runoff from the parking lot. So we were also approved for this action grant for no match, meaning that it's not going to cost the town anything to get this work done. So we're going to try to make, we're going to try to line this up with our park, our park grant, hopefully we're successful with that. And that's going to give us an opportunity to begin the work outside immediately as we wait for the park grant to come, come through. So we're making some progress on that end. And so by way of public update, the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, as the board is aware, was on-site last week speaking with department heads and officials and reviewing documents for our financial management review that the town has been undergoing. And it's my understanding that they intend to have a report finished around Labor Day. We've, all departments have been very cooperative, and we've been providing lots of documents and source material for their work, and hopefully by the end of the summer, we'll have some, some new best practices to take a look at. And that's all I am, Mr. Chairman.
Outstanding. I'm sure we'll follow up to those grants and any further use of them in recycling any products that we can. Now, the assistant town administrators report?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Transitions are going well, the accountant's office is preparing for the audit, closing the books on F Y twenty-four and getting ready for Debbie's retirement, so it's been quite a bit of transition in that office. Jessica Chowdhury is the interim town planner through C M R P C, she's been settling in well. John and I are meeting with her at some point this week to go over the grants that Bill Scanlon's working with, so everyone's on the same page. Another update, my office is now open, normal hours effective today, eight thirty to four on Mondays through Thursdays, and eight thirty to twelve on Fridays. I want to thank the residents for their patience during this transition period. Residents are also welcome to call ahead at five oh eight nine four nine eight zero zero one to make sure I'm available. I'm not always at the window, I might either be in a Zoom meeting or in another office having a meeting with staff members, so calling ahead is the best way to ensure that I'll be able to serve you. Amanda Gage is also helping out with the window coverage for the time being, which I appreciate her willingness to step up so we can best serve our residents. Department head meetings will resume for fiscal year twenty-five, as Mr. Ruda said, our first one is scheduled for tomorrow morning. It's a great way for departments to communicate with one another regarding internal news and updates, and I'm looking forward to it.
Outstanding job, good customer service out there, opening up full, full bore, user friendly. Anybody have any comments? Mr. Johnson?
Make a motion to accept the town administrator and assistant town administrator's report.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yep.
Mr. Sullivan, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, we'll go to number nine, public business. A, vote pursuant to general law, chapter forty-one, section fifty-six, to designate single select board signatory for pay warrants. Suggested town council motion is to move that the board designate the chair to sign pay warrants in accordance with general law, chapter forty-one, section fifty-six, pending enactment of a home rule petition, authorizing the town administrator to sign such warrants as was authorized by the October nineteenth, twenty twenty Dudley special town meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Sigunovich?
I'd like to make a motion that the board designate the chair to sign pay warrant warrants in accordance with general law, chapter forty-one, subsection fifty-six, pending enactment of a home rule petition, authorizing the town administrator to sign such warrants as was authorized by the October nineteenth, twenty twenty Dudley fall town meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, obviously I'll do it. Just as a background, spoken to Mr. Ruda and the two ladies in D L S, this came out of their interviews, brought their attention, and through no fault of anybody's, we thought we were all set, we sent that off to the state, what, twenty-two, I think it was?
So the town meeting voted to approve it, Mr. Chairman, in twenty twenty as a special act that was sent forward, and we were right in the middle of COVID and somewhere it got lost in the COVID vortex.
Right, we had it all, it was all set, it was lost at the state level.
Right, so now it's back as a House bill and it should go through without a big problem. I know it's in committee right now.
Just like you said, it was COVID, it was an oversight, we thought, as a town, we thought it was all set. But I would gladly do it.
Any other questions? There's going to be follow-up on that at the House level?
We'll hear one way or another.
Okay. Is there any timeframe?
We're on state House time, so.
At their discretion, okay, very good. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Section B, vote to approve updated highway superintendent job description. Draft was presented at seven eight twenty-four board of selectmen meeting. Do we have any discussion? We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, any discussion?
Thanks to the department head that assisted Mr. Ruda and the assistant T A of getting this all done, thank you guys.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say thank you for providing the updates so that we could kind of see those side by side. It was really helpful for me to see where those changes are, and I feel a lot more comfortable having had a chance to review them.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Section C, vote to approve Amanda Gage status as a special employee, fire department drone operator slash call member at the request of the fire chief executive, I mean, effective immediately.
Mr. Chairman, the chief is at the library because he's the guest reader tonight for the kids, so he's got an excuse to not to be here, so I'll speak on his behalf. Amanda, our own Amanda Gage, who is, does all our, a lot of our I T coordination and has been drawn into the highway department and administrative aspect of the operation as well as cable T V, is also a drone pilot. And she went out and got that certification on her own, she sent her file, and we'd like to take advantage of that and appoint her to the fire department as a call member for the purposes of operating that drone and assisting any public safety agencies, I mean, departments that need it, such as the police department, should the need arise. In order to do that, she has to be designated as a special employee, which is pretty much a standard way to go about this when you have a person who's an employee on a full-time or part-time basis, such as in the past when we had our A C O who was a call paramedic, as well as our A C O. You have to file a special designation as a special employee with the town clerk's office just to make sure everything is fully disclosed so it doesn't conflict with Fair Labor Standards Act. And that's what the request is, to approve her in that special designation.
And that'll follow all the policies and procedures moving forward to get that done?
That's correct, she'll be, she'll make her regular salary and then she'll receive call pay. Whether if she's called out to do exercise, training, or an actual drone operation.
And she'll, is she the only operator for the drone?
I believe she's the only pilot we have so far, but I believe the police are working, going down that path as well, but right now she's the only pilot that I'm aware of that the town employs.
With a possible backup being worked on?
Correct.
Perfect. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve Amanda Gage's status as a special employee, fire department drone operator slash call member at the request of the fire chief, effective immediately.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Number ten, department communications. We'll start with police chief.
Good evening, just real quick, this Saturday at Parking Shop, we're holding stuff a cruiser food drive along with partnership with AAA out of Webster. We're going to be hoping to have people donate non-perishable food towards the Webster Dudley Food Share. It's going to be from ten A M. till noon time at Parking Shop. And also just want to do a quick reminder, I know the clerk's been throwing it out there on, on the website and myself, there's about two hundred plus dogs that are still unregistered in town at Dudley. Last year, we had to go out find two hundred plus residents. I was hoping that that would not be the case this year, so if you haven't registered your dog, please reach out to the town clerk, register your dog, or let her know if your dog is no longer, you know, in, in town. If not, we'll be sending out those fines in the next couple of weeks. I'm going to be the bad guy again on that, but it needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Next, go with highway.
I just want to let everybody know, we are basically brush mowing every day all the roads. Last week, I had the guys go down to the intersection of Yummies, down nearby Fabian Road, State Road. We mowed that back, I know it's a state road, but there's been a lot of accidents down, down there, so I had to weed whack, trim all that up nice so you can see visibility. Brush mowers been out every day, I get a lot of calls for it, it's just that year, that one time of year, it's just growing like crazy. I also got the guys out, I'm doing stop lines, whether, you know, sort of been doing that, and hopefully I can get over there to the rail trail, that finish up some of the miscellaneous stuff we're going to get to done, so. Pretty much it.
Great job, especially with the trimming back, I've seen the crew out there a lot.
Yeah, like I said, I'm just trying to take care of the intersections that are bad, and just, we just can't keep up with the, the brush this year, it's just growing like crazy.
It is, especially with the rain, the heat, the rain, the heat.
Yeah, it's out there every day, so, I mean, I get a lot of complaints, but we try to take care of the complaints as we go, but, so.
Rail trail's looking good, beach's looking good, kept up the good work.
Right, thank you.
Uh, next, can we go with water sewer?
Uh, just quickly asking everybody out there to conserve water, it has been getting hot, it has been heat waves. We're not putting on any major restrictions yet, but they could come down the pike, but we just hope everybody out there to conserve and doesn't waste the water so we can get to release this season. That's it.
Do we still have those water barrels available?
No.
No?
No, I think I gave the last one last year.
Okay.
I know they were, they were popular at the time.
Right.
And, you know, I might look into them later to see if we can get some in again.
That'd be great.
But for now, you know.
Yeah, thank you. We'll go with the treasurer collector, Mr. Kamignani?
Good evening, I'll be brief, not really. So, first of the fiscal year, we've sent out all of our payments. Remember, we get that discount when we send the assessment from Worcester Regional, there's a discount, if we get our Maya in early, same thing with Chubb, injured on duty, the one eleven F policy. So all of those have gone out early, we get that savings. I would like to say it would show up later, but we, we sort of plan on it, that, that early savings is, is part of the budget. Like to thank everybody in the town hall. It seems there's a whole bunch of people who are looking to pay bills, they've sold a home and received somebody else's bill, so between Lisa and Kathy and the assessor's office, everybody who seems to go to the town clerk, the paperwork flow has been very good. Also, we have people on vacation, it's been very good, sort of that, and I think Mr. Landry had mentioned it, customer service, a whole bunch of smiling people trying to get things done. I'll make a general statement, if you need something in the town hall, it is a good idea to make a telephone call or an email to make sure that is there. As much as I'd like to help, can't marry somebody, I can't provide, you know, you know, an exemption form, things like that, so please be mindful that there are vacations, items like that. We'll end it kind of just on that simple thing, remember tax bills are due August first, the late payers, the F Y twenty-fours haven't gone into tax title, so if there is a question, you'd probably want to get that sooner rather than later because they will appear in the newspaper. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did I miss anybody? Nope. I bet I did, because I see her, town accountant, Sarah.
Things have been going very, very well as I transition, and I'm working very closely with Deb. And we are in mid, at year end, and so very busy in the office, all the payables went in, they had to be in by the fifteenth. We're also working with Vedar, and this will be our first year-end close using the new system. We have a consultant coming out on a call on Wednesday, who's going to walk us through some steps and then answer some residual questions we have with Vedar. We also had a wonderful opportunity to have onsite training on the ninth of July, so. So we're looking at chapter ninety and where we stand with that. And then just closing the books, we got the cash in late last week and moving right along. So we'll have the auditors in here hopefully early August.
Great job, anybody have any questions? None, thank you very much. So at this point in time, I'll go to board members. Start with Mr. Sigunovich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've, I've said many times, when we've had citizen comments and no one showed up, we had some show up today, and many citizens share your concerns. I share your concerns, to be honest. And I, I think we owe it to you to get some information, to find out exactly what's going on and share what we can, and that will be done. So thank you both for coming and speaking. We encourage that, we need more of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard you, thank you.
Great job, sir. You're welcome, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Nothing to.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
I'm gonna kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Sigunovich said. I had seen kind of online that there was, there were some questions. People are looking to get involved and they were having trouble using our website on the volunteer site. I checked it myself over the weekend, it looks like it's, it is mostly working. But if you have any questions, or like if you're looking to find out more about a board or whatever the case is, please just reach out, email, phone, whatever the case is, whatever is comfortable for you, because we do wanna make sure that our boards are staffed and that we have people who care about the community getting involved if you can. And a glitch with the website shouldn't be a barrier. So just reach out, we can get you more information. But like, thank you to those of you that cited that there was a problem and, and I would urge you, if you haven't been back, just try it again and hopefully, it'll be up and running.
Great job, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry for my late arrival tonight. I wanna thank Water Sewer, I reached out to Georgia resident, had a question about a piece of equipment that was left on one of the side roads in Georgia, had it taken care of by the subcontractor within half an hour. Appreciate it. Thank MJ in the highway, we talked about it last meeting, but trimming Tufts Hill has always been tough, tough area, because the state's supposed to take care of it. Sometimes they do, generally, they don't. Thank MJ for sending these guys out there, because it is a trouble spot in town. And again, we talked about the last meeting, we'll talk about it again. I'm getting positive feedback from community members with the police department presence out there. It's not overbearing, it's not invisible, I think they've got a good mix, young guys, old guys. But I think the people in town appreciate the oversight, and that's all I got to say, Mr. Chair.
Great job, thank you. I just wanna bring up some positives, being around town, seeing the departments out there working hard in the heat, and to tell all of you, please be careful and stay hydrated. And I was asked to pass a message off to the chief of police about the new K-9 Maverick. If you have instructed the new K-9 chief that his job is gonna be very rough, rough. Told to pass it on, don't feel comfortable, but take it, so.
You stop being late, please.
Thank you very much, just to lighten that up. Now to go to section twelve, Board of Health, call to order, please.
Hello?
Good evening.
Hello?
Hello. This is the chair from the Board of Selectmen calling. Could you please identify yourself?
Monica Kaufman.
Okay, Monica. We have the Board of Health here to call the meeting to order.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
All right, so I call this Board of Health joint Board of Selectmen meeting, is that how you want me to address it, or just Board of Health?
That's fine.
Uh, meeting to order at seven twenty-one. And Monica's gonna read the statement? Is that?
Um, I just wanna make sure I'm reading statement twelve D.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, twelve, the Board of Health Chair accepts motion to move into joint executive session under general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, not to reconvene in an open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I will second that. So Monica, we're gonna do a roll call vote, so you'll have to state your name.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Monica Kaufman. Aye.
Roberta Johnson, aye. Uh, so all in favor? Is that correct? All right, and aye, passes. Did I miss anything, you guys? It's the first time for me doing that.
Nope, that was great. Now we go to section thirteen for executive session adjournment. Madam Clerk, Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion, the Board of Selectmen would like, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session under general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three, not to reconvene in open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Jay Johnson, aye.
Harry Sigunovich, aye.
Janet Deschain, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Mark Landry, aye. Now we go into executive session, thank you everyone for showing.